I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas is absent. Commissioner Peterson is here. Scales?
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Here.
Commissioners Zakiri?
Here.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Present. So we have a quorum. Would everyone stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as long as everybody's standing and anyone who gives testimony tonight, including staff, must be sworn in to swear that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the whole truth.
Thank you.
And as long as we're swearing in, we have a new member replacing Commissioner Berry, who was reappointed to the village board. And so, Michael, if you would come forward and will do your swearing in, let's introduce Michael Lynn. Michael, please raise your right hand for your oath of office and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Michael Lynn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner on the Board of Planning and Zoning.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner for Planning and Zoning.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Amen.
And bureaucracy dictates that because of now the board has changed, we'd have to have another roll call.
Commissioner Peterson is here. Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Still here.
Commissioners Zakiri?
Here.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Here. And a reminder, everyone, please silence your phones and other electronic devices. And a quick reminder, have you signed in either out in the hallway or here? Anyone who gives testimony at the podium has to be signed in. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the 14 August 24 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales.
Second. Zakiri.
Motion and second. Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Still here.
Commissioners Zakiri?
Here.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Here. And a reminder, everyone, please silence your phones and other electronic devices. And a quick reminder, have you signed in either out in the hallway or here? Anyone who gives testimony at the podium has to be signed in. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the 14 August 24 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales.
Second. Zakiri.
Motion and second. Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Next item is the approval and release to the public of the minutes of our August 14th, 2024 executive session. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales.
Second. Zakiri.
Motion, Scales. Second. Zakiri. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. And a quick review of our public hearing procedures. The way these meetings go is first, we introduce the applicant and identify the petition. He or she then presents their petition. That's followed by staff comments, which is then followed by public can question and comment. We request that those comments are directed to the commission, not to the petitioner. Village Attorney Mr. Zemanak is here to assist us. Finally, then, the commissioners get to discuss question and finally a vote. I would remind you that our vote is recommendation only. The village board will have the final say and staff will notify you when and if you're scheduled to appear before the village board. Under old business, we have none correct. And under new business, we have public hearing PZC number 0192024, a request from C Kingston Partners Incorporated, doing business at 1440 or as 1440 Event Design, the petitioner, and 1133 Cleveland Properties Limited Liability Corporation, doing business as Oakmont Tech Center, the owner, for the property at 600 Oakmont Leg Lane in Suite Lima Lima in Westmont. First, for a special use permit, a request to operate business offices with accessory uses of assembling, warehousing, or distribution of materials, goods, or products. Secondly, the zoning ordinance variance request to increase the total floor area dedicated to accessory uses. Who would address the commission on this?
Of course. Welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
This is Casey. And I'm Bert.
Do you want us to just give our...
You bet.
Okay. So Bert is the owner of C Kingston Partners, and we're both a married couple and business partners. And we've been in business for 10 to 15 years, growing as we go. So in the last five years or so, we've really developed this concept of 1440 event design. Luckily made it through COVID and have been able to sustain and keep growing after. We currently have warehouse space in Lombard and space where we do some of our assembly and storage. And we are really needing a larger space as we continue to grow. So as it pertains to the special use permits, what we do as a company is largely service-based. We do event design consultation primarily. So perhaps for charity, corporate, a lot of brand activations for marketing companies that are working with clients directly. So we may use our graphic designers or pull our resources to fully assemble what would end up being onsite, either in the Chicagoland area or out of state for an event. Sometimes we're using our own resources or we're using our team. For example, if it's helpful, because it's a little bit out of the ordinary, we have a client coming up who will be shipping us goods that another fabrication company made, created. We'll be reviewing those goods to make sure that they're in good condition and giving our opinion about what can be done to further enhance them. And then we'll be taking those materials to Indianapolis with our staff there. And onsite, we do full assembly. That would be at a venue, a conference center, things like that, stadiums and such. Because of the nature of that, we do need that space designated, the 30% that we're requesting. For some items that we keep within our inventory, that would look like small furniture items, things that get used regularly, I would say, in more of like an accessory kind of use, not the primary builds that are going around. And as for the second request for the vehicles, we just wanted to restate that we're looking to have non-CDL required vehicles, so mostly smaller box trucks. Those are used for tools that are actually stored in the trucks, which we use onsite. So they're not coming and going terribly much.
Amazon.
To be perfectly honest, it's mostly so we can get our staff to places and not in their own vehicles, as that is kind of difficult nowadays. And I mean, that's really it. So the majority of the space in Westmont, we've been lacking a customer-facing space. We have not had one. We also own the wedding design studio in Lisle. And right now, we're meeting with clients there, which is a bit awkward as we are selling wedding dresses. So, you know, we'll have corporate clients and trying to hide from girls trying on dresses and whatnot. So we would like to use this majority of the space to set up, have illustrations, let them interact with our graphic design team, with our event leads in a space that's more office-appropriate, more office-friendly. But it is a lot more efficient and productive for us to have all of the space together so that we're not running back and forth and that all of our team can communicate as one, oh, she likes that, you know, go pull this. So we think it'll help us continue to grow, which is much needed, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
No. We're usually behind the scenes, so this is a little weird for us. Yeah.
Village staff, what say ye?
Feel free to sit down.
Okay.
So you don't have to stay up all the time. Thank you, Commissioner or Chair. So as you noted, the applicant, 1440 Event Design, is requesting a special use permit and then a variance to the total floor space area. We've dealt with this property before, somewhat recently in the past year, at 600 Oakmont. This particular unit is their lower-level unit. So this is a space that has historically been used for industry-adjacent or industrial-adjacent warehousing uses in the past. It originally was part of Rockwell, when they produce a lot of that area in their office complexes. It was used for some printing supplies and things like that. So the request here is somewhat based off a tax amendment that we processed in 2022. So in 2022, we were getting a lot of feedback from the office district and trying to fill spaces post-COVID, when people weren't returning to the office primarily. And we had a lot of these unique buildings that were used for research centers back in the day, that still had docks and still have large doors and areas for fleet to be stored. So we worked to craft an amendment to somewhat limit or expand what they can do at these properties, but also limit it to a particular or a smaller portion of the industrial uses. So that's what their request is based on currently. So the special use permit is just for the accessory portion, for the material distribution and warehousing and assembly. They've noted, I don't think they noted actually, that they're primarily operating from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM with about 20 employees in that space. They plan on using 10 of the vehicle spaces for their fleet, those shuttle vehicles and box trucks that they noted. Again, they can use the two additional spaces without coming back to the commission if they need those two additional spaces for the fleet, but any more than that, they'd have to come back in for an amendment to their special use to allow more if they need it. The larger vehicles can be stored inside the space if they can fit, as long as the fire suppression system allows them to do so. Before they were moving into this property, it was actually storage for one of our dealership properties. So it's been fitted for the vehicles to be stored there. Otherwise, they would have to store those larger vehicles at their other locations. The special use has a large list of requirements. I won't go through every single one. It is listed at the end of this staff report in the legal section, 8.13. But the major one to point out is related to their variance request. So the accessory operations that cannot exceed more than 25% of the floor area of the permitted business use. So what they're requesting is a 30%, 30% of the space to be used for the accessory warehousing, distribution, and assembly portion of their business, which is about, which is 5% more than what we allow. This particular property is one we knew of going into writing this tax amendment. That didn't fit perfectly with our requirements when crafting the tax amendment. But we wrote the tax amendment in a way where they could ask for that extra usability. It would be up to the commission, ultimately the village board, to make that determination depending on the use. Related to the use, there are a plethora of requirements that specifically outline what they can do and what they cannot do. For example, they have to have their operations within good standing for noise and fumes and the like. If those ever become an issue for the neighboring properties and they can be confirmed by code enforcement staff, it could, they could be requested to come back and looked at by the village board for their special use to be either taken away or changed. But that's about it for the staff report on this. I'm happy to take specific questions. There are some additional documents that they provided, including a map of where the vehicles would be stored and where the fleet vehicles would be stored on the property and the floor plan.
Thank you. Anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on this agenda item?
Good evening, sir.
You need to be sworn in.
37 Tartan Lakes.
Stand by, Lynn, please. You came a little late, so if you would raise your right arm and swear that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the complete truth.
It is truthful.
Thank you. Yeah. Your name, and you must sign in.
Sign in. Thank you, sir. Yeah, the traffic coming from that section of town is a little bit tight at 6 o'clock, as you might know.
Scott, can you put up, do you have a map, a map of the...
Okay.
Dennis, sorry. Dennis, can you put on the overhead projector?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and I was very happy to see all the codes that are in place and all the requirements for the use of that property and code of conduct and the emission levels and things like that. Just a couple of quick things. When I looked at the website that this company has, 1440, it does say that there's printing involved in their operation, and so I'd like to have some assurances that printing is not being done on that.
Okay, thank you. Address the commission. Scott, do you have a response?
Not particularly. I would have the applicant.
Okay, so we will challenge the applicant on that.
And then, of course, the emissions that come off of that and what's happening with the toxic ink fumes and things like that. So that's something that we're considering. The other thing that's of issue is refuse, according to the requirements for that property. Refuse is supposed to be in an inappropriate container, supposed to be shielded on three sides, supposed to have landscaping to soften the looks of that disposal. So it needs to have that. Currently, there's one dumpster on that property in the northeast corner that is not being shaded in any way. And in the past, there's been a large dumpster at the door of the facility. So it's just something that we'd like to have taken a look at. The other thing is the size of the trucks, large box trucks or stray trucks. We're a little bit concerned about how that would look from the road. It may look like it's more of an industrial facility than what it really appears to be. So we'd be interested in having some sort of screening proposed, some type of landscaping, if you will, to keep that area a little bit shaded from the residential.
You mean on the east side of the building?
On the east side of the building, correct. As another point, the drawing and the wording of the proposal describes it as the west side of the building, in the right up here. And so that should be on the east side of the building. So we're looking for some type of screening between Tartan Lakes and that facility, something, you know, some type of landscaping to be added. The other thing that isn't quite addressed is the amount of scrap that could be coming off of their processes. We really don't know what the volume could be. We don't know how much, you know, packaging is going to be used up as these furnishings are coming into that facility. They have to be disposed of, so we're trying to get a handle around how much of that is going to be happening. Is there going to be particulate waste coming off of that as they grind up the polystyrene foam cushioning materials or something like that? Is there something to be concerned about there relative to the refuse? And so we're interested in that. And that's another instance where landscaping could provide a buffer between what's going on with the items coming off of the refuse stream. So those are the primary things that we're concerned about. They seem to be a good company, but we want to make sure that things are done right. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on. Certainly. I think, would you first address the printing issue that...
Sure. So currently, we print off-site in our Lombard location with a company called Digital Printing. So they do all of our printing. We just install it. So we say it's in-house, but it's really outsourced. So all of our printing is done off-site. Any printing that we would ever do on that property would be roll-to-roll, so no inks, just essentially a giant office printer. So that would be the printing needs.
I think for the trucks that we are using currently, really, the idea is also to have it pulled in.
Inside.
At night. So we also don't want them outside as much as possible.
We have brand-new trucks, so.
Yeah.
We're an event design company, so the way everything looks is very important to us. So inside.
In regards to the scrap or anything, that's not exactly the type of business we are. We don't manufacture furniture, nor do we assemble it from scratch, especially like cushioned furniture or anything like that. We're mostly dealing with walls and stuff you would kind of see if you go to like the theater more so than furniture.
Scenic is typically what it's referred to.
So and the amount of time that we're actually dealing with products like that versus just the service that we provide, our service is close to 50%, if that gives you an idea. So we're not a large-scale, like, manufacturing or product offering company.
To speak about the dumpster, I actually called Flood Brothers today, which is the only one we're allowed to use. The only option for rolling dumpsters is two-yard, so they're switching out that six-yard one, because I didn't like the way that looked either. So they're going to switch the six-yard out to three two-yards and one two-yard recycling inside the corral. So that's supposed to be done tomorrow, with Flood Brothers maybe the day after? So within the next couple of days for, so that will disappear.
If you guys want us to speak to the possibility of landscaping covering, I think there was some question too about which side that, we were just trying to figure it out too.
We're on the east side.
Yeah.
Perhaps the owner would...
Yeah, because I think he can better...
I didn't think I was going to speak today, but I'm glad to speak. So their entrance...
And your name, sir.
And I am with the ownership group for the property, which we acquired in early 2018. The property, so their access is on the east side of the property, okay? And if you look at the contour of the property, it's down below. So we have the first floor of the property, which would pretty much be at grade with Tartan Lakes. Tartan Lakes is on the northwest side of our property. Tartan Lakes, right? That was the property? So I don't believe there would be any visibility from the Tartan Lakes facility, which is... Oakmont Lane is here. Here's our building. So here's the east side of the property facing the 701.
Yeah, Tartan Lakes is to the northwest.
Right? And then we've got the Maze Lake, senior living, and then Tartan Lakes is actually on the west side of the property. So there's no direct visibility, as far as I'm aware, from the west side of the property, the east side of the property, where they intend to keep their vanes. Secondly, I want to point out, and it's in the public records, the property was specifically developed to allow truck parking, semi-truck access, actually, which we're not planning to do. And so because of the lower-level access and the contour, the property was bermed on the north side of the property. There's actually a 10-foot-high landscape berm, and it's written into the public record that we maintain our half of the berm and the senior living in Tartan Lakes maintain their half of the berm. So we do have a berm to hide whatever activity we have going on the site. So I, and then as far as the truck goes, I think Bert and Casey addressed that they plan to park their large box truck within the site itself. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, come back to the podium. Did you hear all of those responses?
I heard most of it, and I agree with most of it. The point is that Tartan Lakes and Maze Lake do have vision, do have visibility of the truck, proposed truck area. I'll show you on the map if that works.
But you can do, the same map is right behind you. It's a little shorter walk, but...
I recommend just pointing here.
Yeah, you've got to.
Next to the microphone.
Let's see, we got, so I can point here?
Yep.
Okay, so Maze Lake is right in this area here. I can show you a picture of how that lays out, if you'd like. That's how Maze Lake is. And the proposed parking area is right in this section here. Now, my concern has also been relative to the dumpster. And the dumpster is in that spot. And that is in that corner of the building, and Tartan Lakes is here. My office is on the backside of the house, right here. I can see that.
Yeah.
The dumpster is the issue?
Just a second.
So that's to address the concern that we would like to have some screening there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We want to ensure everyone's happy, so the dumpster we will have moved and then put back in the corral. And then parking, right now, we're not parking anything outside besides like staff parking, which is just normal cars. You know, right now, we're just parking everything inside. Very rarely, if we have somebody who's parking at semi, like, we could also park it wherever works for everybody. We're not like dedicated to that, like, back spot. It's just where we park. There was just no other reason why we picked what spots. It was really just what everybody circled. So if, you know, if it makes it easier on them, and I totally understand neighbors and we all got them, so whatever is easiest for them, we're okay with. I understand the dumpster thing. Nobody wants to look at a dumpster and have garbage blowing all over the place, so we'll get that moved. And like I said, we already have that with Flood Brothers addressed.
Fine. Thank you.
And the applicable ordinance does not require screening of vehicles that are being parked in standard parking spaces. It prohibits oversized vehicles that would not be able to fit into a standard off-street parking space. However, because this is a special use, if you were to find that the parking of commercial vehicles outside would pose some unique... vehicles outside would pose some unique adverse impact on surrounding properties, you could require screening, but you'd have to all come to that decision.
Sir, did you have anything? Could I give you one more chance? Okay. Seeing no other public testimony, let's go to the commissioners. And Commissioner Scales, would you start?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. I had a couple of questions, but you answered those during kind of the Q and A, so I have no comments or questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy.
I always have a question.
Of course.
The one thing I didn't see in the materials that we received was the hours of operation.
Eight to six.
Yeah, we do.
Correct, yeah. So it's eight to six and then?
Very fluid. I say fluid. We're not always there at eight. We typically charge them at six.
So it's eight to six.
Yes, sir.
So there's no evening or nighttime traffic going to be there as a result of this?
Would you come to the podium?
Oh, sorry.
For the microphone.
So the way that we operate, we try 100% to keep any kind of like deliveries or client interactions within business hours. We charge an unbelievable surcharge if someone makes us work at night. So it would be very rare that that would happen. But people are not working at night. They would not be in the building, and most likely, if we were to go pick up anything overnight, they wouldn't be returning to the property until morning.
Okay. Well, I've heard the comments, I've heard your testimony. I really don't have a problem with any of what you're requesting here. We're going from, it's basically administrative in nature. You already have 25%, and you're going to 30%. And you could even come in and present this for that minor modification. I don't really have a problem with it.
Thanks.
I don't think screening is, in my view, necessary because of the width of the berm, the testimony by the owner, and I don't think you're going to be increasing traffic there. And the dumpster issue you have addressed and the ownership is represented, and that will be addressed. I really don't have a problem with your request. So I'm in support of it, and I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. All the way around, let's, Commissioner Zakiri.
No, I think you guys addressed it, everything. Do you guys have like a peak time or are your deliveries simply on the weekends? Because are those when events are, or does it just kind of depend?
When we use the word events, we do a lot of marketing.
More so corporate and business. So we actually work the opposite. We do work frequently during the week because that's when most of those events are occurring. Even though we promote on our website that we do weddings, it's like 1% of our business.
We work in New York a lot, to be honest with you. So that's where a lot of it's just been lately. So we work anywhere across the United States.
Okay. Yep, that was my only question. I'm all good.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Peterson?
I have no questions or comments. I think it's great. I absolutely love when new businesses come into town. You know, you bring in your employees, you bring in new people, you visit our restaurants, and so I have no objections.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. You're going to keep your showroom in Lyle?
The wedding studio, yes. It's dresses.
I'm curious what kind of an event you would do in a stadium.
Oh, next week, we're doing an activation for a liquor brand. They're trying to sell, it's in Baltimore, at the stadium. They're trying to change out the vendors, so they do like a big presentation. So we build all their backdrops and scenic and stuff like that and.
But a lot of corporations actually do their company celebrations in stadiums. It's common, yeah. A venue for.
2,000 or 3,000 people. There's not a lot of venues that can hold everybody.
What kind of business radius are you, you mentioned Indianapolis.
We can go all over the United States.
Really?
Yeah. We just had one for, a request for Toronto, which would be our first, I know it's not far, but it's our first international.
Yeah, we're about, I would say roughly like 60% in the Chicagoland area, a solid 30% in New York, and the rest of them are kind of various, Texas, Georgia, yeah.
Who's ever hiring.
Yeah. We have a lot of regular clients, so we tour with them.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Commissioner.
I apologize. Our new commissioner, Commissioner Lynn, what say ye?
First, I just want to commend you guys for the size and expanse of your business. It sounds like, it's like a neat niche market, or at least it appears to be.
Yeah, it is.
But like, the refuse that you have, is it, like, just to get an idea, like, what types, what is it? Like, how large is it?
I think a lot of like.
It's all paper products?
Yeah. Not even, we're big recyclers, so it's a lot of plastic. So, you know, garbage bags, stuff like that. You know, we'll bring pillows back from an event. All the pillows go into a garbage bag. They got to be sorted. We have pillows that are going to be stored there. I mean, that's a lot of storage stuff.
It's a lot of cardboard boxes too, but like for any concern that it would be refuse that would cause an odor, be particularly difficult or any kind of fumes, sissies, anything like that, we're not really dealing with those kinds of materials.
Right. And it fits inside the dumpsters?
Yes, yes.
Yep. Okay.
Try to package my garbage as much as possible. It's expensive, so I try to get as more as possible.
Truly, most of our garbage is actually taken care of onsite and meaning at venues. So we don't want to put it back on our truck to come home. So usually, we try to take care of it and dispose it wherever they can accommodate on-site.
What's, what has larger warehousing, like, size, your Lombard facility or this facility?
This square footage is bigger. Lombard is more, I would say, like raw storage, and I call it like cold storage. It's assets that people are storing with us that they may use, they may not use again. So most of our fabrication is done in New York and downtown Chicago. We have fabrication partners. So as it kind of puts it, we're like the middle people that kind of pull all the pieces together and make sure the whole plan is going together. And then, like Nespresso, we did a big one downtown. We pulled all the pieces together, the printing, we pulled the fabrication, the furniture, and then we delivered onsite and made it look pretty. So it's kind of a good example of what we do.
Otherwise, I'm like, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, thanks.
Again, just congrats with the business.
Thanks.
Thank you. Boy, you look like you were, wanted to say something. Okay, any other discussion from the commissioners? Seeing none, the chair is prepared to hear a recommendation under public hearing, PCC 0192024, request from 1440 Event Design and Oakmont Tech Center for the property at 600 Oakmont Lane for first, a second, special use permit, request to operate business offices with accessory uses of assembling, warehousing, or distribution of materials, goods, or products. Do you have a recommendation?
Motion.
Motion.
Scales.
I'll start. Lavoy.
A motion to approve. Scales, second. Lavoy. Discussion questions of that motion, seeing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. And secondly, a motion to approve zoning ordinance variance request to increase the total floor area dedicated to accessory uses from 25 to 30%.
Motion, Scales.
Second, Lavoy.
Motion, Scales, second, Lavoy. A motion and second, discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
And thank you. You will, you'll be notified with staff when your scheduled appear before the village.
I know you will.
Yeah, we're anticipating for the October 17 meeting, which is next, Thursday. Once I verify, you will be notified.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And thank you, sir, for bringing your concerns forward. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is open forum. Public comment rules and procedures are set forth in Chapter 2, Section 2-66 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances. Public comment is allowed for matters of public concern that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present who would like to address the board on, in the open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous items. First, general updates, discussion on zoning ordinance updates. Scott?
Yes, we have two items tonight to discuss. We have one for the OR, in OR 1 district, and allowing additional uses in that district. Our planner, Adam, will be speaking on that. And then we have a second item to discuss the downtown zoning district changes that our consultant has provided us. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. So the zoning ordinance update, as you're familiar, has given staff the opportunity to review all sorts of aspects of the ordinance. So tonight, we're going to talk about how staff has reviewed the permitted and special uses in both the OR and the OR 1 districts. Currently, these districts are very limited in the allowed uses, with both of them only being for office and research uses. So Scott and I, we often get phone calls from non-office businesses asking if they're allowed to operate in a space zone OR 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 1, and their response is usually no. And they're told that if they do want to go forward with the space, they would either need to get the entire property rezoned or get a text amendment for the entire district to allow their use. And this is often very discouraging for the businesses because they're looking to quickly sign a lease and start operating. Often, office spaces are large and open and easily accommodate a wide variety of uses. And, you know, they don't really want to waste a lot of time or money on something that might not even get approved. So when you combine the fact that not many uses are allowed in the OR and OR 1 districts, and that office space has become less desirable since COVID, it may make sense to expand the uses that are allowed, either as permitted or special. So I looked into many neighboring and comparable communities that have office districts, and it pretty much confirmed that Westmont does not allow as many uses as our neighbors. So after looking over a dozen or so of these uses, staff settled on the following six potential additions, those being broadcasting facilities, data centers, financial institutions, vocational or commercial schools, and veterinary offices. Most of these uses, I would like to note, are either permitted or special uses in at least three other office districts in the surrounding area. However, staff is not 100% set on these uses being added, so that's why we're coming to the commission tonight for guidance on if they're even appropriate for office districts. If you believe they are, if they should be allowed in one or both of these districts. And finally, if they should be allowed as a permitted or a special use. So are there any thoughts on any of the uses proposed?
Makes sense to me. I mean, you've got unused space and demand for these uses. I would tend to agree.
What, could you expand a bit on whether it's a special use or a permitted use?
So right now, those six are just not permitted uses?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, so they're ones that I've seen, they kind of vary from community to community somewhat, like a Downers Grove might say it's permitted, where Clarendon Hills might say it's special use. Right now, staff just kind of thinks that these could work, and before we really commit to anything, we just want to test the water a little bit and see what all of you think.
I'll say for, since we just had this user come in, when we did the tax amendment in 2022 to allow those type of accessory uses in addition to offices, we are cracking open the door on allowing more uses to see how many people would take advantage of it. In this case, we've had at least three that have come in for special use for those accessory uses and were approved. A lot of times, we get feedback from, feedback, we get proposals from some of the Class B offices, those are the smaller suites, kind of closer down to Ogden off Pasquale. Where they have smaller spaces and they just are having trouble filling them for office-specific uses. And they usually come in with different users, like fitness studios, which are the smaller classes, or schools, tutoring centers, which aren't inherently allowed right now. So with the zoning ordinance, you're right, as Adam said, we're trying to see how far we want to open that door open, but still try to preserve the nature of the office district and not making it another business or commercial district, per se. The reason the office district is very important to a community on the economic side of things is it has your daytime population. So those, as Commissioner Peterson noted, with this user, they come in and patron your businesses during the day and the restaurants during the day. So keeping offices is always important for a community. But once you open the door, it's kind of difficult. If you're going to permit the use, it's going to be difficult to regulate. If you have them as special uses, because they're not office-specific uses, you have more ability to say, really, this is going to have too big of an impact on this building or community or the neighboring properties in Oakwood. So those are the general conversations we're having with our consultant, and Adam and I have done research in other communities. So that's where a lot of this stems from.
I see. A few of these could be late at night.
Correct.
Fitness facility, broadcasting facility, vocational schools. So wouldn't that be better to be identified one at a time with special use as opposed to just openly permit it?
Yeah, I don't disagree. So the, in our zoning code, the purpose of this district is defined as basically this district is for offices only. So usually, when it says that, we, any other uses that we try to put into the code, we would want them as special uses, at least, because it's not going towards the purpose of that district, if that makes sense.
What's the general trigger for special use?
Just if it's listed as a special use in our code, so we have a table.
I appreciate the table, but I mean, what would generally constitute a special use?
It's usually a business that through its operations could have a unique or adverse impact on either village services or the public in general, or on surrounding property owners. So it requires a heightened level of review, and they have to show that they meet the standards that the village has established for that special use and prove that there won't be adverse impacts.
Something with potential adverse impact.
Right. So for example, a gas station could, because of fumes and deliveries and spills and whatever, typically, those are classified as a special use because of unique adverse impacts that they could cause.
Additionally, back to Commissioner, or Chair Carmichael's point about activating a district that's usually not active during the night, you could see greater impact on emergency services needing to be over there. So it's not just impact on the neighbors, it's impact on the community as a whole as well, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. Thank you. And if they're, if they're permitted, we, you know, the hours are the hours.
So if it's permitted use, we, this commission wouldn't have any regulations tied to it for them to come in and ask for approval. All they really would have to do is submit for a business license, and then it would be reviewed by staff to make sure it's a permitted use and then take it open.
I think special use, in my opinion, would be better than permitted. It does give the village a little more, you know, power and to regulate things. I don't have a problem with any of these types of facilities being in OR 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 1.
I feel like a couple of them could be permitted uses, like data centers is just housing, technology, nobody's there. I feel like most of them could be permitted uses, in my opinion. I would agree. I mean, potentially broadcasting and vocational, commercial schools, but those can't run much past nine o'clock at night, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, the broadcasting is not like your antenna towers, just so you're aware. It's like a padded room, and they do like podcast and type of stuff.
Podcast studio.
Yeah.
So Ron Burgundy is there.
Exactly.
Is there any additional items that would be added to this list?
We're still looking at some. So some of them, we try to do broader categories when we do these discussions. But for example, the dance studios, performing arts, that type of stuff, we've seen in other communities that have them. Usually, they're coupled in under that commercial schools category. Other items that may be related to these as accessory uses maybe are those auditorium uses, especially if you're doing performing arts. Sometimes they have the recitals or the larger events that would have a significant impact on that area for traffic and things like that. So it's not, this is not exhaustive. So it's not, this is not exhaustive, it's just what we saw in the surrounding communities in those districts.
I feel like the only one that I see with potential to, you know, be like a 24 by seven operation would be like an emergency vet clinic, you know, and around the clock 24/7. I don't even know the closest one to here. I mean, I suppose that can be a good thing, but, you know, if we're looking at it from neighboring community aspect and what could cause adverse effect, you know, that's one that I could see.
Or one that has a gigantic kennel for kenneling.
The kennels would not be allowed.
It would not be, considering it's part, part of a veterinary office.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And most of the O, I'm looking for the zoning map, is all north of?
Yeah, most of it's Pascunelli and Oakmont, and then we have OR one on the north side of Cass, on the western half.
Tiger Wonder Park.
Which, yeah, where those, those properties, as we've talked about before, haven't developed necessarily how would the village imagine they would.
Some have closer to Cass Avenue.
Something that you mentioned, the 24/7 stuff, so if done as a special use for like a fitness center, you have your fitness studios, like the Orange Theory, which are classes usually just during the day, and then you have the LE Fitness and the 24-hour fitness, which can go from, I think, like 10:30 for the LE Fitness, and then the 24 Fitness, obviously, all the time.
Yeah.
So having some oversight on that and impact of that on that area might make sense as a special use.
I feel that the use at those hours is so low, but, yeah.
Is there, I don't, I don't know if this is ridiculous or not, but is there anything where it could be a permitted use between certain hours, but that after certain hours it would be a special use, or?
Generally, when we do conditions, so you're likely speaking of what's a special condition, those would be placed on a special use, not a permitted use usually.
Okay. And then even, even though there's like the benefit of a office because it draws workers in for lunches and things, as you mentioned, but more of a retail use than that, that sales tax than, right, even though, even though some of those are probably even very minimal, like for sales tax, but I think you mentioned about retail. Is that, is there, is there a preference in the finances at the village, like for, say, lunch course versus retail tax?
I don't know the difference in particular, as to one's better than the other for taxing purposes.
Well, I'll, I'll say retail is great because it generates sales tax, which is very valuable to the village, but retails, I think the village has recognized retail is dying.
Sure.
Online sales, et cetera. So the village is trying to focus its retail and its commercial district and not in these office districts, because there has to be a place for these office uses and related type services. So it's really not looking for retail up in the OR district.
So it sounds like generally, we're in favor of allowing more uses in the district.
Definitely.
Likely more.
Yeah.
We're likely lean towards special uses with our consultant for these items, at least most of them, if, if there's going to be any impact at all on the office usage of neighbors.
I feel like more, I, I lean the opposite of making them more of them permitted uses than special.
Okay.
That's just my take.
I'd go with.
Really what you're looking for is you're looking for particular language that would trigger a special use.
Well, the way it works is the, the use would just be listed in our table, and it's either special or permitted.
And you're trying to think of everything you could possibly think of, and I get that. I was going to ask John, what do you think about a broad stroke stipulation in the code that would suggest that community development could, or?
That's a good idea.
May determine that special use would be required?
No, that, that leaves kind of unbridled discretion to staff that courts generally frown on, so they could discriminate or unfairly distinguish between equal businesses differently. So you're supposed to classify them either as a use as permitted or special in your code and not leave that discretion to staff.
But their interpretation of the allowable items that, like, like these bullet points that we have, I suppose it's a stretch where, you know, when you call, say, financial institution, well, what does that mean and how is that defined, you know, because it's really not.
Well, we would, we would craft definitions for each of these in the back of the zoning ordinance. Currently, our code lacks a lot of definitions.
Correct.
Specifically, we have a lot of older uses that were crafted for a very specific user when they came and approached the village to do a tax amendment.
Yeah.
We would look at getting away from that type of writing in our code. We're really looking for larger buckets of uses rather than very, very specific ones we currently have, but there'd be a general definition.
But there is a definition in here, a sample from Lilla Brook, as to what a financial institution is.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm going, because it is still, even though we wouldn't have that broad stroke comment, it's still an interpretive thing from, from staff standpoint, while that is a financial institution.
Correct. There's still some level of, yes.
And that's, that's when I, if I have discretion and I'm trying to figure out where the use lands, and between two uses, we discuss as staff and cover the bases for it. So it's not, that's a daily discussion in our current code as well, to try to fit uses in the list that we have. If it's not fitting in well, then it's not permitted.
Is there, in attracting businesses to the town, is there, is there an advantage? I would, I would think that there is an advantage of having a permitted uses more than, than special uses, but I don't know, is that, is it?
I would say you're correct. However, in protecting the current properties, those office uses up there, if they all of a sudden are now surrounded by strip malls and smaller commercial properties, it reduces the value of those offices and less likely to be occupied economically.
Why is that?
I would argue vacancy does too, but.
Correct, yep. It's a balancing act, right?
Yeah, and that the landlord might be, might be, they, they're, they're going to watch out for their property values and their, and their space.
Generally.
Not always, yeah.
I think that's a good question. Were you done?
Go ahead.
Well, just to tag on to that, which I agree with, is the objective to make it more efficient because you're getting a current demand for these types of uses?
It's more to actually just, right now, when they come to us, we say, no, go find a different location in this other zoning district, or they go, usually go to a different community looking at their office districts.
We're turning businesses away.
Generally, yes. This would allow them an avenue to get approval, very similar to what they had to go through for the special use, and explain their case and how they're not impacting the surrounding area.
And given the current zoning designations and where they're geographically located, it's not likely that there would be new development of a strip center or something similar.
Correct, yeah.
Be an adaptive reuse or?
Correct.
Of the existing space.
Generally, yeah. There's a few vacant properties up there that are largely parking lots.
Well, I think the alternative is vacant spaces for an indefinite amount of time.
Correct, yeah.
And as everyone notices, office isn't a darling right now, for sure.
Have business, have financial institutions inquired about locating in the OR district?
We have some financial institutions that are strictly offices, so if you remember, I think, two years ago, Fifth Third moved in on Pascunelli, but they're largely offices, so they're categorized as offices. But a lot of times, we've gotten, not a lot of times, occasionally get inquiries for financial institutions like the ATMs and the general banking needs.
So if someone wanted to put an ATM inside an existing office building, they'd have to come in for a special use?
Yeah, because we, we list ATMs as a separate item entirely right now.
Is it an accessory or?
Yeah. Because we list it as a completely separate use in a separate zoning district.
Right, understand that. I remember when that amendment was passed in, I think, the early 2000s. Now, ATMs are fair, fairly ubiquitous, they're in Walgreens, they're in all sorts of places, convenience stores, those little standalone ones, they haven't been shown to be a spot for crime or littering or some of the concerns that I think the village had when it created that special use requirement. I would, I would think that a standalone ATM maybe it's, maybe doesn't have to be classified as a special use, but just my personal thoughts.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I would also think that, you know.
Like if ATM is something that's hardly getting used anymore.
Banks, you know, there aren't as many banks.
Yeah.
It's consolidation, and they're using less and less, like, bank buildings because of online banking. Wondered if you would want financial, financial institutions such as banks or check cashing places or things like that in your nice office, you know, OR district?
Yeah.
Or just rather have them in the B two.
I would, I think I would generally agree with that, largely if we go that route to allow them at all in the office district. We would probably have fears of, if not crafted correctly, the payday loan places moving in, especially into the smaller units, which would change the makeup of that district, so.
Is that considered a financial institution?
I think it depends on how we define it. Currently, I don't think we, do we have a definition specifically for financial, do you know? I don't know.
I don't believe so. There's, you know, like I said, a sample one that includes credit unions and currency exchange establishments is in the definition.
Yeah, it, every village and city defines stuff differently.
And I don't know if that's really appropriate in an office research district.
Would parking requirements be a consideration as if some types of businesses?
So we would still, we'd still have parking regulations for uses moving into places into different buildings, they would have to meet those.
So that's unrelated to?
We would, we would say if it's a special use, they'd have to show us that they're not making a parking issue for whatever reason. That's generally what we require.
What if it's permitted use?
Permitted use, they'd still have to go through and say, we're not going to cause an issue. We have parking standards for, for example, a lot of times, it's one parking space per two employees, which isn't a great way of measuring it because employees' numbers change constantly. So we're looking at revamping those regulations as well in this rewrite, but permitted uses still have to comply with that. If they can't comply with it, they have to come in and ask for variance. The last time we had one was for the urban tri gear that was moving in on Chicago Avenue, so.
So I know this is discussion only tonight. So if you were to make a staff decision subsequent to this meeting for these six uses or seven, what, six, what would you, would you come back later and suggest adding more should the occurrence arise?
If, if you want me to come back to have a discussion?
I'm not suggesting you come back, I'm just saying that.
I'm happy to.
Do we, are you asking, do we see like the, the definitions?
Well, I'm just suggesting that if these are the ones that are kind of top of mind or currently, then would it make sense just to go ahead and assume that you're going to make the decision to allow these as?
Yeah, so.
Or special use?
So if we go away from here and it seems, it seems like we are comfortable with most of these, we'd go back, what we do with these discussions, we go back to our consultants, say, this is what they told us, this is what staff thinks, have craft the language, and we'll review it, and that's what the public hearing portion will be.
And then would come back, you'd have actual language?
Yes, yes. Yeah, this is just, we don't want to go tell them to go do something, the consultant, and then to go to the public hearing, and the whole commission's like, what is going on? We would, we had no idea this was happening, that's what these are for, really.
So the language, the language would define the uses a little bit further.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking of Commissioner LaVoy's comment when the applicant was here today, said, you know, you basically had to come here for an administrative thing, feel like the more we can remove that.
Seems more efficient.
Yeah.
The only hot button I see here, though, on this list, you were very, very careful about the, you know, the def, the item, veterinary offices. Well, what I've seen elsewhere, that's a huge hot button everywhere else. I've done a lot of those around all communities, and people don't want the dogs barking and everything else. And I know you didn't say that, but that definition is kind of critical.
I agree. I agree, and we've seen in other communities, even here, we've seen it when we've had vets come into the downtown, because a lot of times, they can't meet the 100-foot requirement.
Yeah.
And the discussion tends to be focused on what's happening outside the office.
Right.
Because of dogs and.
Yeah, but then you are also impacting the other use of that particular building or wherever you're at, the other uses within the building, because if you have veterinary uses, that means animals are coming into that building, and, you know, I don't, so if there's one disagreement I have, and you know me, I'm not about overregulation at all. If there would be an objection, it would be that one, not the financial one or anything else. It would be people that are in the office across the hall here, got to listen to dogs barking all day long, because now we've allowed a vet, a vet to come in, even if it's offices only, they're still going to walk through the door.
One option is, as you pointed out, is refine the definition section to say it has to either be in a standalone building or?
Yes.
Have a separate entrance, like a sole means of ingress egress separate from other office or other uses in the building.
And you make it a special use.
Yeah, or, yeah, I was going to say, that, and that was my veterinary one, was the one that stuck out with me, but the 24/7, so that's a good point, too.
Yeah, we're amenable to that, that makes a lot of sense.
Definition is key.
Correct.
You know, so put in there that, no overnight.
Yeah.
I see a lot of overnights, you know, that, that people want to house their animal for the weekend or whatever, that goes on all over the place.
Yeah, currently, we have in our code the separation from kennel versus vet office, so.
I just don't, in fact, I'd even, looking at it, all based on this discussion, I would even scratch that, because no vet is going to want to come into an OR district and operate unless they can have that type of use.
Yeah, likely be in a standalone building, as we, we see with the vets.
It would have to be, yeah. So a definition needs to say that, like John was suggesting.
Yeah. It would probably be placed as a special condition of some kind.
Do we have many standalone buildings in the OR 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 ones?
Not generally. OR one, yes.
OR one, you do, yeah.
Yes.
Long Cass.
That's probably where you would see, if done that way, that's where you'd probably see most of them.
Which is mixed in amongst the residential.
Definitions are clear, because you don't want somebody coming and saying, well, I don't need to come, it's a special use, because this is the language, and we meet the language.
Yeah. Anything else of OR? Okay, we'll, we'll talk with our consultant, I probably won't bring it back for discussion, it'll probably be in the public hearing portion. Okay. Second item.
I would say that John's input is probably critical on the definition.
Correct, yeah, he's reviewing, once the final draft's completed. Okay, I have to stand for this. I have a presentation.
Stand about.
Downtown. Just to give a primer before I get into a lot of this, in our memo, sorry, I got it thrown out, in our memo, you'll see at the top just where we've taken a lot of this discussion for the downtown changes. So we've already talked with the CDC, and then we've talked with, actually talked with CDC twice now regarding this, and then we've.
CDC for the benefit of the new commissioner?
Community Development Committee. It's a committee of the whole with the village board.
Not Center for Disease Control.
Not Center for Disease Control. We've taken the CDC, and then we've also taken it to the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance to discuss. At both, they've received it favorably, I would say. Not a lot of details have been fleshed out when we talked with them, it was just the general idea of these changes, but I'm going to go ahead and go into some of it here, give you background on the land use plan that we currently have implemented, based on our comprehensive plan. Everybody received this map when they became a commissioner. This is a focus in on the downtown. As you see, it's downtown mix. As you see, it's downtown mixed use largely on CAS and then we have some corridor commercial on the north end of CAS and then a single family attached residential along the tracks on Burlington and Quincy.
Yeah, can I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
While you're, you're talking about that map, would this new revision be in conflict at all with the comprehensive plan?
Oh, yes. And that's going to be the next step is to hire a consultant and redo the current plan.
So, so what do you do in the interim, though, that this would prevail, right?
The, the.
Supersedes what?
That this code that we're doing would then be like, there's a lot of conflicts now within the zoning code against the comprehensive plan. So when somebody comes walking to the front door and wants to do something, well, what do I do?
You look at the zoning because the comp plan is a guide only.
Yeah.
It's from 2013. It's out of date. It's particularly going to be out of date in light of the comprehensive amendments to the zoning ordinance. If there is a big project that comes in that complies with the zoning but doesn't, well, let's say it doesn't even comply with all the zoning or the comprehensive plan, we'd probably force them to do a comp plan amendment.
Yeah.
But if it, if it complies with the zoning, if the comp plan's out of date, we're probably not going to require them to do a piecemeal amendment to the comp plan.
So in 2013 is when this was adopted, one of the first things in the recommendations in the comp plan is to update the zoning ordinance back from 2013. We are now just getting around to it today.
What have you been doing all this?
I was in school.
He just got here.
So I would say generally the, there's bits and pieces of the comprehensive plan that are being implemented into the zoning code and the zoning map itself. So it's not a complete offset of what's shown on the comprehensive plan. We have specific sub-area plans for different corridors, corridors throughout town. So it would be in compliance with those sub-area plans, if that makes sense. But I'll get more into it and then obviously we'll have a discussion portion and this will be brought back again for public hearing at a later date. So this is the zoning map that we were referencing. So you can see the downtown is largely made up of the B1 limited business district and then the R5 general residency district. Staff, after talking with our consultant, when we first got our first draft back from them, they said, this is really not how most communities develop their downtown anymore. Actually, we're pretty behind in how we look at our downtown compared to other communities. So going through some of the ones in the neighboring communities, downtown Downers Grove has three separate districts in their downtown. They have a core, they have a downtown business that surrounds their core and then a downtown transition into their single family homes. In downtown Glen Ellen, they also have three separate districts within their downtown. They got the CBD retail core, CBD services surrounding that, and then they have the multifamily residential on the outskirts of that as well. And then lastly, one of our neighboring ones, downtown Lyle, there's a split up into two, the B3A central business district and then the B3B central perimeter business district. And this is generally based on what we've heard from the consultant and other communities, generally the route that most communities go. It's largely so you can specifically design a downtown to have larger intensity uses in the middle of the downtown, close to the train stations and the bus routes where people are moving more. So this is a draft map, draft in big letters, that we're working with. It's not defined entirely yet, it's just general. But our consultant came back and said, this is what we see based on the surrounding communities and the near downtown and generally staff's in agreement with the industry that this is largely the correct way to go. Now, the details on it will change as we go through stuff and based on feedback during the public hearing and tonight and at committees. But splitting the downtown into three distinct areas, so the first one's the downtown core, which is what our train station is located and then the first two blocks of CAS and the one block south or north CAS and then the block south of CAS to Richmond. And then the downtown edge, where we see smaller developments are on that north, far north end of CAS when you hit Naperville and then the south end as you approach Holy Trinity and at the end of, end of that downtown is Bubbs. And then the downtown residential is currently zoned as that R5 district. We were looking at creating a completely new district because right now the R5 is scattered throughout the village. So if we make changes to the R5 specifically, it would have impacts throughout the village in those zoning districts. For example, down by Diane Main Park, we have multifamily. Those are some of the larger ones in town. Those would be impacted if we just made changes to those regulations. So this is generally what we're looking at for the map wise. Obviously, changes will come with, if adopted like this, there would be some blanket rezonings that would accompany the zoning ordinance rewrite after the fact where all these property owners will be notified in the surrounding area and we would make the changes throughout the downtown so they're informed. So just getting into some of the nitty gritty stuff, so we are defining basically three different building types in this downtown area. The first one's the storefront buildings. Those are your Quincy stations, which is the picture here, where you have retail on the first floor, kind of larger spaces on the first floor for the commercial aspect. And then on the second and higher floors, you would normally have either offices or residential and multifamily. The reason it's important to have these type of buildings in your core is really because the multifamily and those residents are the ones that's powering your downtown, drawing the commercial to have an active lively downtown. When you don't have enough draw in your community with a multifamily or, back in the day it was the single family where you'd come in and use the downtown, you, you see some vacancies throughout your downtown is really what it is. So for the storefront buildings, those are the mixed use buildings intended for the shopping and dining districts. They're oriented to the street and they're pretty narrow with little to no setbacks on the property lines you usually see because you want to activate those spaces. You want to see that something's happening in the downtown when you're walking by. And then usually you're either accessing the property from those alleyways that we have implemented. We're lucky in this downtown to have alleyways. A lot of, a lot of towns don't have those. So this gives you an idea on the storefront buildings. These are some elevations. The bulk standards for that, for these type of buildings, and these would only be allowed or permitted in the downtown core and downtown edge districts, would allow up to five stories, so the Quincy Station in the downtown core and then three stories in the downtown edge. As you approach those higher floors, we would require setbacks so there's some tie-in to the neighboring buildings if they're not at the same height. You can see that on Quincy Station with some of their parapet walls and then they have their outdoor space on that top floor. So right now, our current code, and you might not know this, but we've brought cases where this has been an issue. So for example, Neat Kitchen, if you recall, they had to get for their patio, they're required setback for that patio of 17 feet from the street or from the property line.
Yeah.
Because we have a, we have code enacted right now that says you have to be 50 feet from our CAS Avenue Road, from the middle line. And so mostly that leaves 17 feet from the front property line along CAS and they have to be set back that far. You can see on this diagram here, the item put together, most of our buildings don't sit at 17 feet. They never have. They're usually at the property line or five feet back. Only time we really see it in the downtown, which isn't really a great thing for the downtown, is when they have front parking. So we see on some of the mini marts in the downtown, usually you want parking in the rear or side because when somebody's walking in your downtown and there's a gap in buildings, they usually turn around, especially if they're visiting because there's nothing telling them that there's more downtown as you walk north. So as, as you see gaps, that's when you're, as a visitor, you're going to say, it's not really worth me walking anymore. There might be a great business at the end of Naperville or at the end of CAS that you never knew of because you didn't, you didn't walk that far because of those gaps. So right now, most of the buildings in our downtown couldn't be remade today. They're not conforming because of these setbacks because they were never, they were created before, those buildings were constructed before the code was enacted. So relating to the old downtown and what we perceive into the future, we're looking at these setbacks. So on the left is the B1 district and how they're currently required. So you have a 20-foot setback in the back, which we don't, we plan not on changing. In the front, we have the 17-foot setback currently and then technically all those buildings are supposed to be five feet apart. In the new code and what the consultant has proposed for the downtown edge and core, we have a spectrum of those setbacks rather than set setbacks. So at the minimum, or at the maximum you can, or yeah, minimum you could be at zero feet on the side and rear as long as you are on the side near the buildings and it won't create issues with alleyway connections. And in the front, you could be at zero. In the least intensive, we would say, we want you at five feet. We don't want you any further back unless you're doing a courtyard or something that activates that area. And then you could also do the five feet on each side because a lot of times people have walkways on those sides if they need them to get to the back. So we won't institute, we're trying to provide more development in those areas, so that's why they were reducing those setbacks because we found them as issues throughout our downtown currently. And then with new proposals that we see, they don't want me set back that far because it takes away from their, either parking in the rear or deliveries in the rear as The second building type we're looking at are general buildings. So the general buildings are your urban buildings. They're typically housing multiple residencies or offices. A lot of times they have offices on the first floor and those are somewhat stagnant spaces. So you're not going to have the big windows for the commercial or the restaurants showing activation. But they're building types that are needed in the downtown to supply population for their downtown. We have a few in our downtown. As you get north on CAS, there's somewhat older buildings right now. The, usually there's a central main area in those buildings where you have a lobby. They're not separated out units like row homes. And they allow for smaller buildings to be implemented in our downtown. So there's some changes and it's not just a tunnel of tall buildings. So general buildings would be allowed. I believe it's the downtown edge and then we're looking at also allowing them in some of the downtown residential area along the tracks. These are some elevations and just some general guidelines of how those would look. Generally, they would be three to four stories and they would have that one main door to get in and out of the building. That wouldn't, generally, they would have the one door. They could have multiple doors if they have those offices on the first floor. This is a diagram just showing the setbacks for this building. So they allow for further setbacks than the downtown or the storefront buildings. So again, the first one is the B1 of what is required currently. And then the second one is what would be required in the downtown edge, so out of the core on CAS and then, which is generally the same, five feet and five feet. And then in the residential, we'd want a further setback at 10 feet because we're now going into those transitional residential areas. So you want to slowly start to get to that 35 feet that we require in our downtown or 25 feet in the downtown of single family homes. And then the last building type we're looking at are the row homes I mentioned. So the row homes are typically those vertical ones. They're sometimes called townhouses where there's a single door for each unit on the floor, the brownstones in Chicago, those type of complexes. We've had a few, or at least one that's come in recently, which would be considered one of those row homes. Generally, they have either a garage in the back or parking in the back, but they have stoops usually to activate those front doors in those spaces. And the row homes would typically only be for that downtown residential area along the tracks. Right now, we've had, as, as people have approached us with some of these vacant lots in the area, along the tracks, it doesn't, the current zoning does not facilitate their needs or what the comp plan imagines for that area. So this is to fix some of those issues. These are the elevations we typically see for them. They'd be capped at three stories. We usually ask for some changes in those elevations so it's not just a flat wall, but those are your typical row homes. And then here's just a diagram of the row building setbacks in the R, the residential districts. So currently in the R5, which those are zoned across the tracks, along the tracks, we require 25 feet to be set back at the minimum regardless of the building type. And currently, we allow for single family homes to be built there as well. So they generally have to follow those guidelines for the setbacks. For the proposed changes, we're looking at reducing the front setback to 10 feet so we can get those activated stoops. And then the rest of it would be similar to what we have in the downtown, so five feet on the side and 20 on the rear at the minimum. Now, when you look at these diagrams, that's not saying that whole area is going to be built. It's just saying that's your buildable area. We still have other regulations that require them to have open space and obviously we have stormwater regulations which impact what can be built on our property. And this is just some appendix stuff from our neighboring municipalities. I also wanted to show one thing on the overhead, Dennis. And it's in your packet as well. Because we have so many plans in our community and we have the comprehensive plan, we have design guidelines, we also have a separate map that basically shows a downtown core, downtown edge based on building design in our design standards right now. Now, our designs, or they're design guidelines, so they're not regulations right now, but I just want to make sure that everybody here understands we're not just pulling this on a thin air. This has been talked about through staff and the public multiple times. It's just our current zoning regulations don't allow for a lot of this stuff to happen without coming in and asking for 30 variances to 10 variances. So. That's generally what we're looking at here right now. You do have some information here. All of it's draft language. Nothing's set in stone, so we're open to changing things as we see. But this has been our, before we go to this commission, just ask what your thoughts are for these bigger items. We always go to CDC because we don't want to go through all this process and have the commission on board for ultimately the village board to have a different opinion. So that's why we go this route rather than first asking the zoning commission, if that makes sense. Okay? And I'm going to sit down and then we can discuss. Any general thoughts? Go ahead.
If I go first, that's going to be trouble, but anyway. This handout that you gave us.
Yes, that one was an old one from CDC. They gave us a new map today.
It doesn't have the, the.
I can get you a new one. The.
Could you throw that?
Yeah.
Could Dennis put that back up there?
Yeah, the, we have, we have a separate company that does the maps and they got us this one today.
You just didn't think I was going to notice that.
No, we just gave you what we had.
Okay. So the downtown residential, okay, what I've seen elsewhere, like I'll give you an example, over in Downers Grove on Forest Avenue, which is like one block west of, of Main Street, you have bleed areas. You have like, ideally, you want transitional types. You have bleed areas. You have like, ideally, you want transitional type zoning, right? But here, you haven't done that. And my question is, is like, for example, across the street from the Public Works area, I think you've got that shaded in yellow, which would be a downtown residential.
Correct.
Of course, we would have then. That would be considered, the properties you're overlaying that used to be in a straight residential zone would now be in a different zone, and it would be a general non-conforming situation, correct?
Correct. So anytime we rezone a property, especially ones that have not been developed in the new code, you're going to face non-conformities. Generally, when you do, especially these mass, the blanket rezonings, you get more, obviously.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what my, what my point is.
I, I just want to mention before, because we, we did think of that. So currently, what we asked, asked our consultant to do, and I should have mentioned this at the end, and was, CDC asked us to do, is to still allow those residential properties to utilize their properties for single-family homes. So they're, as they would stand in the new ordinance, when adopted, they'd be permitted uses, single-family, for those existing houses.
Yeah.
But ultimately, based on the comprehensive plan, we want those attached housings there at the end of the day. But we, they would still be able to utilize their properties as if they're an R3 property, those sheds and all of that.
So a concept here that I think is probably the most critical thing on this map is where you draw that downtown residential line. Because of the transitional properties. For example, if you look at, at your downtown core areas, it goes to the limit of the downtown first property from Cass Avenue. And then all of a sudden, you're into single-family residential. And, and that's kind of like the rub everywhere, you know, along Ogden Avenue, along any busy street. You have commercial, then bingo, you have residential. And I noticed that you drew the line for the downtown residential across the street from the Public Works. You're incorporating some of the, of those properties into the downtown residential. And everything facing Burlington, along Quincy and Burlington, you're, you're basically getting into some of the, all the properties that generally face, you know, Quincy and Burlington and along that whole route. But, you know, what you've got is, you've got other properties that along the downtown core, as you go north on Cass, that all those single-family properties, like along.
Linden?
Lincoln?
Yeah, Lincoln.
Lincoln and Linden.
That border, the downtown core, I really think that that line, you know, that, that should be the transitional property.
So you're saying on each side of.
That'll be easier.
Each side of the core?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're saying.
To the next block.
Should also be downtown residential?
Because then you have, you know, your commercial on Cass, then you have your transitional kind of zoning with three-story, like what Scott's talking about, and then you go to single-family. This map shows that you go from core, basically bang, to single-family. And I, I think that's probably not the way to go. Just what I've seen elsewhere, other communities, that you're going to have that bleeding going on. And transitional properties is probably the better way. So if it were me, I'd be wanting to see that transitional downtown residential district expanded to the next block.
So we would, I.
So if you want to do row houses that aren't that, that, you know, tall, do you want to do other things in there, that you could do that?
And we would still allow for those single-family homes to keep going.
I agree with that.
I, I think so. I don't have it on here. I should have threw it on there. The comprehensive plan and that subarea plan does show all of, or most, the southern end of Linden from Norfolk South as mixed-use core. So it would make, it would be in line with that comprehensive plan.
Yes. And, and the other thing too is that where you drew that line is basically on alleyway.
Yeah, it's.
So you have an alley anyway, so now you have on one side of the alley, single-family. On the other side of the alley, you have your downtown core. And I think that line should be changed. I think you should put that downtown residential area north on, on Lincoln and Linden.
Would you say?
Bearing the core, downtown edge and downtown core, core districts. Just because I think, you know, today, hey, they're single-family. But 20 years from now, if we want to develop that into row houses or whatever, increase the density there, you could, you could do that on that street. And on the other side of the street, it goes to single-family.
First, I want to make sure, anybody that wants to say anything.
I agree with that, by the way. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was going to mention that too, is that from like Lincoln to Linden, I, I think, I, I would like the downtown area to, to expand by the half-block on either side of what you have shown here to, to meet the street. When you go just south of here, or actually from Quincy Station, it's a little, it's a little weird for the single-family homes that are on, on Lincoln, right, just next to the Village Hall, that they have, they have a large, what, five, six-story building that are looking across the alley and into the backyard, like, and I think it's like a, as, as it might sound, I think it's actually gentler transition. When, when you go from, say, multi-unit that are on, like, we'll say Lincoln Street, like, multi-unit on the east side of Lincoln Street that are like having, like, face-to-face, looking across the street to single-family on the, on the west side of Lincoln Street, that at least, it's not, it's not like your, people are creeping in, like, peeking into your backyards like I see here on, like Quincy looking down onto, Quincy and Richmond Station looking down onto the backyards of people. Like, that's almost too personal of a space, and I would rather that that transition be from the faces of those, from the face of a single-family to the face of multi-unit.
Got it.
And, and let me see, that you, you also mentioned with the, on Quincy, you have like, I know there's, I'd like to take a look at the, because there's already a set of, a very small set of row houses there currently, right?
On East Quincy, or sorry, West Quincy, yes, yeah. Largely, there was a development that was approved. Only one building, I believe, was actually built.
Right. There's, there's kind of a, let me see, I, I'd like to see it again, just to see how, how they do with parking and things, like, or how do they get, access the garage, because they, they don't have an alley, or do they?
They don't. They have kind of a makeshift alley, I would call it. So they have, I, I believe the potential plan was to have them all connected in the back. Because it's just the one building, they have on each side a kind of circle drive all the way around the building, is my understanding. Yeah.
Just, I, I'm just thinking of like the, the parking, because when I, when I think of like the difference between townhouses and row houses, I kind of think of just where the garage pretty much is, like the townhouse, the garage's out in the front, which I, I think looks tacky, of course, but like the row houses look nice and clean. But then if you put the garage at the back, then, and there's no alley, then I don't know, so that's, that's something that comes to mind.
Yeah.
And then, another, I'm sorry to ramble, but like, the same idea of like expanding to Lincoln and Linden is, those properties are, they look larger, like the property widths, which I think to a developer, I think it's easier to buy up, say, like two or three properties and turn it into multi-unit building, like, and turn it into Quincy Station. But to try, but to attempt to, to buy seven or eight, like, of the smaller businesses on Cass, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not a developer to know if that's easy enough, but I would just imagine that's more people to deal with and the less likelihood of that happening. So that's, that's another reason why I kind of think that expanding the board, like to Lincoln and Linden, like, that, that might be an easier stretch of properties for, for a developer to, to turn into larger multi-unit Quincy-style buildings. But that's, that's a guess of mine.
Yeah, I think, since we're talking about expanding some of the residential areas, I know, like I said, on Linden at least, in that subarea plan, it says the multi, or, multi-use core area can extend there. If we go to Lincoln, which I'm not adverse to do, but adverse to do, but the comp plan may not be in agreement with it currently. So it would be additional, as Zemnack mentioned, amendments to the comp plan to allow for some of that other, the other side on Linden to be able to be implemented in. Now, from a purely planning aspect, makes a lot of sense from what I'm hearing. I just want to reiterate that we do have to come in and rezone these properties. So you will see people here coming in. They will all get notifications resulting from their property changes. So I just want to make that clear, that it's not just staff gets to do it, and it's all good. There'll be a public hearing process after the fact.
Comes with the territory.
Correct, yeah.
If it's explained properly, I think they'd get it.
Also, we have, like, for example, Manning School, Manning School is on Linden. That could be converted into condos or converted into lofts or whatever. You know, I don't, they're up for a big referendum on, on the ballot, and if that doesn't happen, I mean, that, that property could be sold. And that should be incorporated into that, that district.
I, I like the idea of expanding.
Commissioner Lynn, were you saying expanding the, like, in line with what Commissioner Lavoy was saying, the residential? Or were you saying, just so I'm clear, the downtown core to?
That's true. The, thank you. Like, I was kind of mixing the terms. Like, I, I was thinking somehow multi-unit residential when I said that. I kind of, I don't know if it's the general or the row houses or.
Yeah, the edge would allow for both. The row homes can also allow for both, but for less density, basically.
I guess, I guess in that case, maybe the, the edge. Thank, thank you for asking.
I just wanted to be.
Because the core would be, would include commercial.
Yeah, core would be required on the first floor to have those storefront buildings.
Yeah.
To activate those. So that'd be basically, if you did that on Linden or Lincoln, you'd be looking at storefronts, which wouldn't make a lot of sense for the transitional piece.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the residential, and Commissioner Lavoy, was your thought to do it all the way up to the, the edge on both sides or just along the core?
Well, we have properties now that extend, like, for example, the bank
Yeah.
goes all the way from Cass back to, to, to Linden.
Yeah.
With that drive-through bank over there, you know, so there's, yeah, it does make sense. But it, but the caveat here is that there, you could still have your single-family residential property there, and it's conforming. You don't have to worry about it, right? And don't want to have any restriction on people until it gets ready to be developed. Because then a developer could come in and buy multiple properties and be able to go into the, the new district, the new residential district and, and do that.
Yeah.
And develop transitional properties the way it should be done.
Yeah.
And we're guiding them. This is going to be a guide to get them to do what we want them to do. And, you know, taking down the, the single, redeveloping single-family properties into transitional properties as it abuts to our core only makes sense.
Yeah.
I agree. And if you're, if a developer's going to come in and take something along Cass and go up to five stories and make it economically viable, then stepping down towards Linden, for example, to the east and putting townhomes or row homes
Yeah.
in an assemblage would make sense.
And I don't agree with the core line either, where the bank is. I think that that should, should kick back, and the residential district should be on Linden. I don't think that the core should go all the way to Linden.
Yeah, I think right now, this property is actually split-zoned.
Yeah.
Which is not good. So I think it was just an afterthought for the property zone B1, the bank itself, but the ATM portion is zoned differently currently, so.
So just, so I'm following, following along, you, you're saying along the core, expand on either side to the residential, not all the way to the edge, like up to Naperville Road as well?
I think, I think it should.
Yeah, to both.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where my head's at.
So right.
Core to Naperville.
Right now.
Yeah, all the, yeah, basically along the whole.
Agreed.
Both, both sides of everything, pink and purple.
Since we're talking.
Probably to a certain point.
Since we're talking about Naperville and Cass, right now, this area, oh, you can't see my cursor, actually. Along this area, right here, and here, or currently B2. That is an area that has always had, has issues when they're trying to do any development because of those existing properties. Most of them are non-conforming. We have several multifamily apartments in that area as well. That's zone B2. It's kind of a mixed-up portion right now. We weren't looking at extending anything in that direction without going through the comprehensive plan and getting input from the public.
Yeah, that, there's a, there's a definite breakpoint there on those properties. So yeah, it could go up to those properties, I think, because just the way that they're, the uses are now.
Yes.
How is the comp plan formally adopted?
It goes through a lot of community input sessions. It has, I believe, comes to planning and zoning first, and then for the public hearing portion, and then just like the zoning ordinance, goes to the village board for final approval. And then it's adopted into our code.
I have a quick question on the R7 district. Does it allow for any commercial whatsoever?
R7, as in the downtown residential? Sorry.
Yeah.
We call them different names when we're in the office. I don't believe so in R7. It wouldn't allow, unless it's a, one of those general buildings. It'll allow for those office-type uses. We haven't fully, first, we wanted to figure out the building types and whether to be allowed as we slowly approach the single-family. We haven't delved into a lot of the uses.
So then it would be a variance if someone wanted?
If, for uses, it's amendment. So if they wanted a use that's not listed currently, it'd have to get a text amendment.
Well, my only thought here is, and I could be persuaded differently, is, I mean, you're seven blocks off of Cass. If there was a neighborhood convenience item or something like that that could go in at a floor level.
Yeah, like a corner store.
Might be beneficial.
Yeah. We do have a large, large amount of properties along the tracks on each side, more so than a lot of communities where there's no change until you hit in Downers Grove
Right.
area where they have some commercial, because they have a train station, yeah.
Burlington is a long stretch.
I don't, I don't think we were looking at doing any commercial in the residential, primarily to protect some of those single-family homes behind.
I get it. I was just throwing the idea out that if it's walkable or something that's.
So general building, though, right now is just, you're just thinking of it primarily as office?
General building would, could, and may be a office on the first floor or with residential above, always.
So a mixed-use, but office.
It could be all multifamily for the general.
With reduced standards, basically.
We're still messing around with the uses, obviously, so.
Yeah, I guess it, yeah, it can, I think, the comment you made earlier, it could be a bit odd if you're a single-family home across the street and then you're looking directly into the large windows.
The line goes up and incorporates some of the single-family lots.
Good. I'm not a teacher. You can just talk. Sorry. You don't need to raise your hand. You can just talk. Go ahead.
Say, a lot of the, the discussion of like Lincoln to Linden, I don't know if it, how, how far south we should, maybe, maybe only to Richmond. I don't, I don't know if it would apply much.
Oh, you're saying on the South End of Tracks?
Right.
Generally.
Just before you redraw.
With Holy Trinity right there, which is a much larger building than most in that area. We were looking at not extending it past what the current development is on that South End of Cass.
That makes sense.
We have a lot of already improved properties as you approach the light on 55th. A lot of them are already attached homes in some way, and a lot of single families already multifamily, so.
I also have another comment.
Go ahead.
I'm like focused on this, this downtown residential thing, because if you look along Burlington Avenue, the way you've got that, that new district there, those lots aren't really deep enough to do that type of development. I mean, it's.
We're thinking.
On the north side of Burlington?
Yeah, yeah. If we had, like, if you're requiring a service alley, you're requiring some sort of access there, maybe that line needs to creep to the north, you know, one single-family lot.
Oh, you said east Burlington.
West Burlington.
West Burlington.
Just like what you did on, on east Burlington, it, it goes up into the single-family, just, just because of the configuration. But if you're looking at how things get developed, and not necessarily how you draw the line on a map, it would, maybe that, that line needs to creep to the north.
One parcel north.
One parcel, because you just don't, the, the lot is deep enough north to south to do development there.
Generally.
Convenience of having the line drawn like it is. It's convenient to have the line drawn like it is on East Burlington, because those are apartments right now, anyway.
So the, generally, because they have an alleyway on West Burlington, compared to the other, on the other side of the tracks.
Where you think it'd make...
It's easier for them to develop the rear end of that property for parking, because they don't need to have a huge access to connect the properties.
Are you talking about Scott?
On West Burlington.
Saying there's an alley behind those.
They've got an alleyway here.
So that yellow line is the alley there on West Burlington?
There's an alley over here.
So there's a little bit of a...
Oh, so the alley does go all the way through?
Yes.
Right.
So there is some...
And then, past, past here, it gets into the single-family homes.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the lot's not pretty deep.
Yeah, we imagine, if development happens along there, they'd have to incorporate a lot more properties. There's a lot of very small, 30-foot width properties.
Why not just make it easier?
Well, we just had the project, what, three months ago?
Yeah.
And it was, it was tight.
That was Grant, Grant and Burlington, wasn't it?
It was, uh, no, was it Lincoln?
Uh, Lincoln and Burlington.
Lincoln and Burlington.
You're stimulating, you know, opportunity for development, because if a developer comes in and wants to do row houses, wants to do something nice in there, the lot, the way you're mapping it is not big enough.
Does it help that the setbacks and everything changed? I mean, is that enough?
So, yeah, we're pushing, we would be pushing the building towards the street frontage.
From base, compared to what it is now?
Compared to what, right now, it's 25 over there, so that's why they had to get a lot of variances for where they're building-wise. So it'd probably benefit them pushing it, especially on a corner, to be able to push it into the corner more, and then have the rear for those detached garages or attached garages to those units for access.
Get a couple feet.
But, yeah, the, because of that alleyway, it's a public alleyway, so they wouldn't be able, without the village coming in, be able to change those lines for development, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So.
What you're saying, that can't, we can't do that, or...
That's why the line ends there, is because of the alleyway. So if we wanted development that included another portion to the north, and there's an alleyway, it wouldn't, you would have to basically get the village's property for the right-of-way, so it wouldn't work with the development.
Well, from a parcel standpoint, John, if an alley is vacated, does half, half the alley go to the northern, in this instance, adjacent property owner, or the southern half?
So normally, that's the case, but the village could choose to vest title in just one adjoining property owner.
Okay.
My, my general understanding, because of the streets and how they're redoing alleyways, they have no intention of vacating anything in that area.
But in the event of a development proposal, perhaps, it might make sense.
I think, I think it's, it's probably, I've never, yeah, I've never been approached with it, so I don't know if it's an opportunity, and they're just looking at the map saying, eh, if that was a parcel to the north, we could put in our building.
How deep are those lots right there along Burlington?
I want to say 150. Don't fact-check me on that, I don't remember off the top of my head.
The lots going, the normal lots, those are 150. If these, graphically, looks a little bit smaller, but...
Could be 130.
But there might, I don't, I don't know, there might even be power lines going through that alley, right?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I know they're implementing some sewer drains along, under the alleyway for a lot of them. I don't know if this is one of them, I would assume so.
No, I didn't say that. I said, who needs that stuff?
Um...
So it sounds like generally, everyone's in favor of expanding the residential along the core and the edge. For sure, on the north, on the edge, and then on the south, on the Lincoln side? I mean, I don't, I don't think on the Linden side. Right, you don't need to extend...
Go all the way to Lincoln on the street, so the area of single-family residential next to the core along Lincoln would become the yellow...
All the way down, all the way down to West Dallas?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah.
That gives you transitional properties all the way down, right?
Yeah. And then, I, probably doesn't make sense along South Linden, right?
South Linden...
It shuts out, so that's where Holy Trinity starts, I think.
Yeah, right, so probably not.
Um, just to mention, because it's not shown on the map, that East Quincy portion along the tracks is currently manufacturing, limited manufacturing, it was rezoned a few years ago.
That's okay.
We have no intention, as of now, to rezone it. Obviously, that is something that can be discussed during the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Land use plan, so.
What about north of Naperville on Cass? You've got a little bit of a hodgepodge, like, and then you transition towards business and commercial.
We're always figuring out what to do with that area. We have plans, so right now, the zoning for a lot of those properties is R4, which is the multifamily, a very, very low-density multifamily.
Meaning, you have a new townhome project that's gone up, of course.
And then we got the comp plan that says it should be commercial. So, and a lot of those properties, as you slowly approach Ogden, are also OR1. That is something, again, comprehensive plan, where we would get that sorted out, about what the village residents and elected officials want to see there.
Well, I mean, you've got R4 on the east side of Cass.
Correct, yeah.
Going north, which some of those are businesses, like...
Yes. Yeah, and then, the comprehensive, that land use map shows a lot of it to be commercial, so.
So would there be a consideration to extend the edge that much further, or...
I don't think with this, in this particular case, right now, I think first, we have to go through the public hearing for the comprehensive plan for a lot of that stuff. Just because my comp plan does not agree with it right now, if that makes sense. Although, maybe out of date from 2013, we still have to use it for justification.
What do you do with the case of that, our grocery store on Naperville and Cass? They bought that property that they were going to put parking lot, then the tree...
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't around for it, I do know of it, because we've had, we had the property next to that one, that was...
Because they bought the property, but they never did it because of the tree requirement, right?
Yeah, I don't know if it was the tree requirement, or they had issues with some of the stormwater requirements. Again, we're not looking at that in particularly for the zoning ordinance. We're just making sure that those other code sections are referencing the correct material in our zoning ordinance, but it's not in this commission's purview to regulate that. We are moving some of the landscaping standards into the zoning code. We're still seeing if we want to implement the tree standards in here, but because that was discussed before, we were taking a hands-off approach from the planning staff, same point.
Scott, what was that, that particular parcel?
Uh, it's the one just, I believe, I think it's this one. Oh, you can't see my...
I can't see.
Sorry. I believe it's one of these. I think it's this one.
See, I think that's where the residential should go to. Because if they want to not develop that property into a parking lot anymore, that would make sense to have...
The R7?
Yeah. Right there. That would make sense for, for that downtown residential district.
Is this the second parcel, south off Naperville, Naperville Road on the east side?
Yeah, they came in for, they bought that property, they wanted to develop it as a parking expansion, but they never built it. And that would make sense to incorporate that, because that's going to give opportunity to...
We do have, along that area, we actually have a few vacant lots currently.
Yeah.
There's nothing on them, as you approach Manning School, so. But again, a lot of the changes you're referencing, everybody's referencing, may not align currently with the comprehensive plan currently. So some of it may be, for the rezoning for the districts, we look at a very limited scope for now, and then when we go back for the comprehensive plan and guidelines for that, then we can readjust the lines. But as soon as the zoning districts are implemented, these three, you have at least the framework to work with, so. Anybody else, as of now?
Yeah, I guess, just, in general, yeah, I'm a fan of widening these kind of areas, and then, maybe even stretching, yeah, north of Naperville, and then even, even down east onto Chicago Avenue, too, because I don't, there's, those areas seem kind of underused a bit, or something.
Got it. Yeah.
Like, we said before, the general rub here is when you're doing commercial, high-density stuff right next to single-family, it's problematic, you know, it's just...
Yeah, we, and we, yeah, we looked at that with a lot of the building types we're proposing here.
Yeah.
To basically force those step downs in intensity.
Off of the wall, yeah.
Yeah.
So what, what are the next steps, then?
So right now, for this, we're going to take these comments and talk with staff and the consultant, and then we'll likely have to bring this, could be another CDC, depending on the timeline of things, or we could bring it back here for discussion before public hearing.
When is, when do you anticipate public hearing on the whole rewrite?
We generally said before, for the end of the year this year, it's looking like we're going to be pushing it off a bit, as we have these more comments come in.
Yeah.
Generally, this is something we want to get right.
Yeah.
We've had, been working with, I don't want to say a broken code, but a code that doesn't fit anymore, because it's been piecemeal together since the 70s. So this, at least, will give us the framework to work with as we go through the comprehensive plan rewrite. So it's a very important document for development.
Yeah.
Are you getting active interest right now from any developers, or anything going on with areas?
Always, always. I have meetings three times a week, so.
So you're busy.
A lot of times, it's, right now, and this is a frustration with staff, right now, we ask them to show them what they're going, they want to do, and then we look at it and categorize all the variances needed. That's what we had to do with Quincy Station, which is, I assume, a building that would, would be implemented very well into our proposed code in that area, but they had to come in for a host of variances, because they couldn't meet any of the requirements. That's why, when we showed the plan of the existing buildings, a lot of them can't even meet the requirement today. So if a building burnt down in the downtown, they didn't have any variances on record for their setbacks, they couldn't rebuild.
Was that, was Quincy Station your benchmark for the five stories?
Generally, yes, yeah. We had, because it's the only one in the downtown that reaches that height, and it was viewed favorably for the downtown core, that was kind of the benchmark. We did have a development on the north side of town, north side of the tracks, that was approved at seven stories with their variances.
Barely.
Barely. Seven stories with their variances, which, that's a, right now, a project that was voided out, withdrawn. But staff at least felt comfortable that permitting that height in the core is fine. Anything more than that, because of how close our single-family homes are right now, they can still come in for the variance request, if it's a great project. They still have to meet those hardship standards, but they still have the ability to do so.
I just keep thinking back of, you know, when that came through, that I did a sunlight study on that. There's properties, single families are never going to see the sunlight if you build a building that big.
I remember you talking about that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, this was fun, good discussion.
Yeah, this is good, good discussion. Thanks for, thanks for the presentation and all that, so...
No problem.
I'm sure both you guys worked on it.
I like playing teacher sometimes, I guess.
Well, in the same area, Commissioner Lynn was not with us last month, but did you want to make a comment, remember our discussion on ADUs?
Oh, yes.
Last month? You made a, you made a comment earlier, that you had an opinion on this discussion?
Yeah, so, so you, because you weren't, you weren't here for a lot of the discussion we've already had, which has been basically every meeting.
Or ADUs, is it?
Anything, you can always say it just into the mic, so we have it recorded, send it back to our consultant, or you can just send it to me email, up to you.
Yeah. Yeah, what I, what I had mentioned about the ADUs, which I'm a fan of, generally, I just pointed out was how we have some pretty ragged alleys in the town, and if, if, it'd be nice if a person, or whoever is, like, say, using an ADU, for them to have access from, say, the street through the property to get to it, and not to have to rely on accessing it down like a creepy alley in the middle of the night, so, and like poorly lit one. So I, I was just thinking of, like, those, those considerations as far as an ADU.
Yeah.
Like corner lots, it's a breeze, even the, even the next lot over is easy. If there's interior lots that are off of, like, a poorly lit, not very, not very well-done alley, then maybe, if there was, if, I don't, and I don't know for sure what the answer is, but I wonder if it should be just accessed somehow through, from the street. And, of course, that might also just be a sign that we have to clean up our alleys more, too, but, but, I mean, alleys are...
Yeah, I'd say largely up to Public Works and their streets plan for the alleys, but we get inquiries all the time about detached garages and the unimproved alleyways. They are legally allowed to access it, so we kind of take a hands-off approach. If they want to drive their car through some of those unimproved alleys, which are largely gravel, that have become dirt, they can do so, because they have right-of-way access.
So, yeah, that, that's for the, for the...
The ADs.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, that makes sense. I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, anybody have anything else before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I have one other thing. You'll likely see a straw poll from our admin, Jamie Hoffman, coming to your emails for potential special meeting dates. I don't know when that'll be, it'll probably be into December, so.
Okay. Next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 13th, at 6:00 PM?
I will have items for it.
All right. Anything else? Chair would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion scales?
I'll second, put one.
Motion second.